We'll call the city council meeting for Tuesday, June fourth, two thousand nineteen, four thirty P M. The order, first item on the agenda is your consent agenda items. What's your wishes?
I was told by Dave to ask if this could be taken off the consent agenda.
What, there's several items on the consent agenda.
The C V B, what, policies and procedures, changes.
One point four.
Anybody have any comments on it or anything?
I can make a comment because I'm on the C V B and I actually met with.
Shannon, Shannon McKee.
Yesterday, and we had went over the policies and procedures, and I had told her I wasn't going to pull it because it was, the policies and procedures were voted unanimously by the C V B and the chamber board. That's why I told her if she wants to go up to the mic and ask for a counselor to pull it, so be it, but I had informed her that I wasn't going to pull it because it was voted unanimously by the C V B board.
Okay. Anybody want to pull it, or do, I guess, for what reason?
Just to make a statement for lodging under fifty with the exception of our C V B rep. Who is not here.
Are you, are you questioning whether you represented it under the fifty?
Yes. Yes, I don't.
That there was a voting person there?
He's the voting person, and I don't think he understood what he was voting for. So unless he did know what he was voting for, I'm not representing him if he did vote for that. But it's for the rest of lodging under fifty.
I guess I'm gonna ask the question, did they have a, they had a meeting with an agenda?
Mm-hmm.
And with the agenda, did they would have an outline of what they're voting on for yea or nay? And we're hearing that it was unanimously voted for in favor of approving it.
Everybody was provided with the policies, procedures, the strike through on the updates, and it was a unanimous decision.
But I'm speaking for lodging under fifty that is not sitting on the C V B. So.
So what did she say? Um, I guess I'm gonna make a motion to approve the consent agenda items and pull one point four and have a discussion and hear just what the complaint might be.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda items except one point four, to have a discussion on it, any more discussion? See a nun, on favor, say aye.
Someone else is coming up.
Up. Is it for the discussion afterwards? For one point four?
This is for one point four.
Okay. Any more discussion? See a nun, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Falls, no?
No.
Oh. Finance director, please call a roll.
Who was the second, I missed that.
Larry.
I was.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
No.
President Schmidt?
Yes, motion carries. All right, item one point four for discussion. Tom, or what, you got more?
Tom?
It's okay if I have the podium? Thanks a lot. Tom Firth, ten twenty-six fifteenth North. I'm the former president of the C V B, or whatever you call me, chair, and I was involved in the finance committee that reviewed the budget. I was involved in proposing the language that changes to the policies and procedures to reflect the things we were trying to do in the budget. Finance committee met, we proposed this to the C V B committee as a whole, like Counselor Christian stated. All of the C V B representatives were invited to that meeting like they are every other one. And so, once it was approved by the C V B as a whole, it was moved on to the chamber board, which it was then approved by. And I'm not sure, well, maybe you do understand how much time is spent by people going through the proper channels. Finance committee, C V B committee, chamber board, and I would like to see this added back in as a consent agenda item. This thing has been beat to death and approved almost, well, like Counselor Christian said, unanimously. And I don't see any reason to have any more discussion on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard?
The only thing I wanted to say was I want something on the record for lodging under fifty, that lodging under fifty is not happy with the proposed budget. We feel that the chambers made changes when we were not represented at times. There's, with the budget that's being proposed because of the policy changes, the budget is changed. And there's seven hundred and fifty dollars less going into media than what was eight years ago. We had thirty-nine thousand dollars going into media. With this budget, there's only thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty. But yet we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollar budget. Eight years ago, we had a ninety-three thousand dollar budget. I mean, we're going backwards. And that really needs to be taken into consideration about how the chamber's handling this money. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you once again. The, the reason that the dollars are roughly similar to what they were eight years ago is because eight years ago, we were outsourcing all those functions that Miss Sarah Wormka is now doing at the chamber. And doing quite a job, I might add. And so there's way more to this story than what we need to get into at a city council meeting. Like I said, this has been talked about and talked about, and this really should be on the consent agenda items, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to rebut that, what you said is not true.
Okay, I guess my comment is, I entertain a motion to approve one point four.
I'll second that.
No, I'm gonna entertain one, somebody's got to it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll entertain that motion, and I, I just wanted to give the person that wanted it pulled the chance to speak, and, and I feel too that, that the right process has been gone through, and the people that are running those funds have done their job, and they do it well, and I appreciate concerns, and so I make a motion to approve one point four.
I'm gonna second that, you know, I feel we have commissions and we have people in place and boards and, and members, you know, in place, and they're heard by their representatives, and you have a voting power, you've, you've stated you do have a representative for under the fifty, and they voted in favor of it, you know, I'm gonna go in favor of that.
We have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? See a nun, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Falls, no? Motion carries. Thank you. Item two point one, mechanical amusement device and licenses. That's for nineteen twenty-seven, South Broadway Street, Pizza Ranch.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? See a nun, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Falls, no? Motion carries. Item two point two, temporary on sale intoxicating liquor license for the Brown County Agricultural Society, and that's for August seventh and August eleventh, two thousand nineteen, well, actually, August seventh through the eleventh.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any discussion? That's for the Brown County Fair, any more, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Falls, no? Motion carries. Item three point two, general license renewal, that's for tobacco, fireworks, kennel, kennel and mechanical music, sheep, and solid waste hauler, taxi and tree service.
Some will.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, and that's for one year. Any more discussion? See a nun, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Falls, no? Motion carries. Item two point four, gambling permit for the New Ulm area Catholic schools, and that's for September twenty-first, two thousand nineteen.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Falls, no? Motion carries. Item two point five, peddler's license, and that's for, oh, let's see, Aaron, can't even pronounce the name, Nugent?
Nguyen.
Okay. And that's for June fifth, two thousand nineteen, ending June fifth, two thousand nineteen, July fifth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any discussion? See a nun, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Falls, no? Motion carries. Item three point one, preliminary plot for Oak Bluff eighth edition. You have something on that, Steve?
Uh, I do not, Mr. President. I think the planner does, Mr. Nysley.
Done? Okay. My screen ain't set up the way I'm used to, so I don't know who I'm gonna call on, so be prepared. So anyway, I'll get it straight next month.
All right, just a brief summary on the Oak Bluffs eighth edition. The property that is being platted is eleven point nine-three acres, and it will be split into two lots. Lots one will be sold, and lot two will be continued to be owned by the diocese. The property is currently zoned R three, and as it stands today, part of the property is farmed, part of it is vacant, and the rest is blacktop. There are utilities on Sixth, Seventh North and North Highland that would be available to the site, and the plat will have, again, two lots and a cul-de-sac. Lot one will be four, four and three quarters acres, and lot two will be six point eight four acres, and then the Sixth North Street right away will be point three four acres.
Thank you.
I'd like to add, the planning commission recommended approval of this also. We had no objections on it.
Thank you. That opens up some nice properties, all, motion to approve with conditions, the preliminary plot of Oak Hills Bluff eighth edition located at fourteen oh six through fourteen forty-six, Sixth North.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any more discussion? See a nun, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Falls, no? Motion carries. Item two point two, preliminary plot for the Palmer Edition. Go ahead, John.
All right, the applicant for this plat is the city of New Ulm. The property is currently owned by the state of Minnesota and the city. I believe we're all aware of where this property is located. It would be south of the, south of the roundabout, across the road from Inards. The property is a total of thirty-one point two-four acres, and will be used for the Minnesota National Guard site. This site, or on this site, they're gonna construct a field maintenance shop as well as a readiness center, and the schedule for that, for construction is to start with field maintenance shop in two thousand twenty, and then continue with the readiness center in two thousand twenty-three. City of New Ulm will end up owning one point two-four acres, which will be designated for the use of the public right of way and the continuation of Palmer Avenue. Currently, the property is zoned B two, and it is being farmed today. And there are utilities located on the south side of Palmer Avenue and U S Highway fourteen, but the storm sewer will require the installation of a new line from the site on the, on North Highland Avenue.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that the planning commission recommended approval at the May thirtieth, two nine, two thousand nineteen meeting, and with conditions.
I'll offer to, a motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any more discussion? See a nun, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Falls, no? Motion carries. Item three point three, Roger Stoll variance application. Got something on that, John?
Certainly. And so, Mr. Stoll is asking for a variance to install, replace and expand his existing garage. The property that this is located is in the R two zoning district, and that district has required setback for the side yard, I'm sorry, for the side yard would be five feet, and then the rear yard would be ten feet. Because of a plat done in nineteen forty-five, when they split this property up, there actually was a garage already on the site, and in the plat, they split the property right down the center of that garage. One part of that garage is owned by Mr. Stoll, and then another one by the landowner to the east adjoining Mr. Stoll's garage. So clearly, that situation, situation wasn't created by him, but he is asking for a zero-foot setback for both the side and rear yard. There has been another variance granted that is very similar, and that is to the property to the east, four zero foot setback for both the rear and side property lines.
And.
Thank you.
Like to add, if we had a public hearing, we had no written or oral responses into this, and we've got a condition on there, you know, for the fire separation, and we see no objections, so.
Just to comment on that, myself and Dave Stobbe used to call these very unique housing developments way back, where we take a half, or a side out like that, build three homes. I don't have any issues with it. Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any more discussion? See a nun, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Falls, no? Motion carries. Item, under new, let's see. Okay, here we go, three point four, Todd Zongle, conditional use permit application. Go ahead, John.
All right. So, Mr. Zongle is authorizing, or requesting the authorization to play fill, place fill on a special, in a special floodplain hazard area that's subject to the hundred-year flood, also known as the flood fringe district in the city of New Ulm. This site is located east of South Front Street and north of D Street and west of the Minnesota River, Minnesota River levee. There are currently several small buildings on this property, small storage sheds, and the city of New Ulm has a large easement going north to south for the purpose of the Minnesota River levee, as well as a storm sewer main that exits on the north side of that levee. The proposed project by Mr., Mr. Zongle would be to place up to forty-five hundred cubic yards of fill on the property to bring it up to the elevation of eight fourteen point five. At that elevation, he'd be able to construct a single-family residence on top of that fill. There is adequate room on this site for building that residence, and Mr. Zongle is aware of the storm sewer and the easements of, on that property. Now, at the planning commission, there was recommended a number of conditions on this site, and I would like to read through them for the record, if you wouldn't mind.
Go ahead.
So, the first condition would be the elevation of the first floor of the structure must be above eighteen, or one eighty-four, one hundred and fourteen point five feet mean sea level. The placement of the fill must conform with the city of New Ulm, New Ulm's floodplain management regulations. Residential basement construction shall not be below the flood protect, protection elevation of eight fourteen point five, mean sea level. The applicant will prepare for the city review and approval of a plan identifying the location of all the fill and the erosion sediment control plan and the identity of the methods for stabilizing that fill. And this will, these will be plans prepared by a licensed professional engineer or a qualified individual acceptable to the city. The applicant will secure an approval from the city of New Ulm to place fill within the easement area designated in document number three nine three two thirteen and located on lot one, block one, Zongle addition. The applicant will make those improvements necessary to allow the existing storm sewer manhole in the property to properly function and operate, and the applicant will provide the city with convenient access to the manhole and piping, and will construct any improvements to the stormwater system and manhole as directed by the city engineering department. As well as, the applicant won't object to any noise generated by the operation of the pump and other equipment to properly maintain the adjoining storm sewer system. The applicant will consult and advise the property owner to the north of the proposed placement of the fill on the property, including the location and elevation adjoining their common property line. Placement of the fill will not be, not adversely impact the Minnesota River levee. Upon completion of the project, a licensed professional engineer will certify that the city, certify to the city that the project and any structures in the property have been constructed in compliance with these requirements. Designation of the floodplain has been made by parties other than the city, and the city makes no representation to the accuracy, accuracy of the same. Floodplain designation is an estimate only, and an actual flood event may vary significantly from the elevation set in the floodplain. Designation of the floodplain does not imply that the subject property is free from flooding or flood damage. In the event of a flood affecting the property, the city will not undertake activity to protect said property or any improvements therein from the effects of such a flood event. The applicant will pay the cost to record the permit with the Brown County Recorder's Office.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'd like to just add from, we held a public hearing for the planning commission on May thirtieth, and we recommended approval with conditions, and Mr. Zongle was there to speak on behalf, and his neighbor also, Mr. Cordis, to his north, and they both are in agreements, and Mr. Cordis knows what's gonna happen next to his property, so there was no objections, so.
Okay, thank you. Any more concerns, comments? I myself also, it's in my ward, met with Mr. Zongle, it looks like we've got everything in order, I mean, it was run by the city engineer, he was okay with the process. So, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving with conditions, the application of Todd Zongle, requesting a conditional use permit to allow the placement of up to four thousand five hundred yards of fill in a special flood area hazard, subject to inundation by the one percent annual chance of flood, hundred-year floodplain, also known as the flood, flood fringe district in the city of New Ulm floodplain management regulations in thirteen oh five South Front Street.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See a nun, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmidt?
Yes, motion carries. Thanks, John.
Yep, good luck.
Old business, item four point one, adopt a city of New Ulm ADA transition plan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Development of this plan is a requirement of the American, Americans with Disability Act. The plan was developed and created to address accessibility issues or shortcomings of the existing infrastructure within the public right of way. At the last council work session, the, the outline of the plan was presented to the city council. We did have an open house with regard to this plan, it's listed on the, or it's posted on the city website under, under the engineering tab, and we're recommending adoption of this ADA transition plan at this time.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
I'll offer the motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See a nun, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmidt?
Yes, motion carries. Item four point two, downtown holiday garland.
Council president, counselors, this item is, is a continuing item, and what you have before you right now is kind of the overview of kind of the engineering study that was proposed during, last year during the holiday discussion. There's approximately twenty-two to twenty-six locations, which would be eleven cables, plus an additional couple buildings in case some owners decline. For an engineering firm to come out, the initial inspection would be about five to six thousand dollars for them to come out to give us, to help give us an accurate estimate, see what the building types are. For the full structural inspection report, it would be about four to five thousand dollars for each building, so times the twenty-six buildings, you're looking about the hundred thousand dollar area to do this engineering report. And then, from the engineering report, you could potentially have up to about fifty thousand dollars, initial estimates up, upwards of fifty thousand dollars to replace anchors, do repairs to those buildings, and so the additional would be, who would pay for that cost, the city or the property owners? And then looking at getting new cables would be about five thousand dollars per cable, you know, eleven to thirteen cables would need to be purchased, and then the annual cost to the P U C is two thousand dollars for the greenery, and then installing, which is about three thousand dollars in labor. So some of the things to consider would be to continue again, a one-year easement, and then try to figure out what those holiday decorations are gonna be moving forward, to pay the cost of doing the study and see where that leads us in continuing the, the garland tradition across the street. Discontinuing any support for holiday decorations would be an option, or looking at other, kind of what other cities have done, lighted parks and the things of that nature. My recommendation would be to continue with another one-year agreement for an easement to do the garland for this year, and then starting essentially tomorrow, whether it's me and the chamber working together, come together with different options for decorations in the downtown area, and bring those options forward to the council, so you guys can make a decision. But I don't think there's enough time between now and Christmas for an, for us to get quotes and information together, to have decorations in place for this Christmas, so if we look at doing another year easement, so we have time, so by next summer, we can have all the options available to you and get the decorations in, in line for the two thousand twenty holiday season.
I guess I'll comment on it, I, I would support that, because I think we need, it's too late to do anything different for this year, and I guess with the costs and to do the inspections and everything else, I think that's gonna way exceed what we wanna do, so I think we need to come up with some other kind of a plan or whatever, so, and I do agree, I think we need to work on it basically immediately, because if we start putting it off, we did that last year, we're back here, the same place again, so we need to start now and come up with something probably before the first of the year for next year, so we can get some plans and budget and everything, 'cause we actually, we're gonna need it for budget, I think.
Yeah.
You know, a comment I'll make, and I'm probably gonna be the Grinch that stole Christmas, Mr. Christian doesn't want garlands downtown, but I've been upfront with the downtown action team, from the people that I have talked to, and you start discussing these kind of dollars, in their minds, it's ridiculous for the city to stick their neck out for up to two hundred thousand dollars for eight garlands hanging across Minnesota Street. I had four people tell me that in a coffee shop today. Once you tell them those numbers, look at some other options. Decorate German Park, decorate Broadway like we did fifty years ago. I just don't think we should be spending that kind of money, and I'll guarantee you, property owners downtown find out thirty-five thousand to fix your parapet, city gonna pay for it? They're not going to. I mean, I'm gonna be upfront with it, I'm not gonna keep dodging the bullet, I've had a, a few of, what word am I looking for? People who stand strong, we have to keep up with this tradition, I just. I just don't, I think the city should be sticking our neck or money into those kinds of things and we have all kinds of other funding things that need to be funded. That's my take right upfront with it.
No, I, I'll support you on that too because I, that's kind of the comment I was making, I don't think we can afford to stick that kind of money in it. We need to come up with an alternative and what Chris was talking about is coming up with an alternative, whether it's on Main Street or whatever, I, you know, we need to get a committee together and we'll leave that up to Chris to give it some thought and report back to us and.
I'm fine with going ahead for one more year, you know, and then exploring options and, you know, and maybe it's, we have to come up with new traditions, but, you know, or other methods of, oh, we wanna decorate downtown, but we have to get going and get a committee and we have to get a budget.
Yeah, I, I've had people call me and on the street and stuff, make different comments and different suggestions and stuff and I think the more people involved, the better idea we're gonna have to what could be done, so. I think we need to involve some people with this here and I actually had a call today and Doc Ann says she'll be glad to work with you. You had the same call?
I had the same call too, so.
We all got it, Chris, so.
I don't know, there might be, is there somebody wanna add to it or not? No?
I, I took a couple calls on it too and as soon as you tell them how much the structural review is gonna be, you know, that hundred thousand dollars and they're just like, absolutely not. I mean, it's just outrageous, they don't, I think people, once they understand the cost, but they do still like the idea of having some kind of decoration downtown, so. And I think Doc Ann is kind of right that, you know, maybe it takes a community to kind of give some input and bring some ideas forward.
Mr. President, if I could be heard. If the, I don't think a motion has been made yet, but if the council were to decide to extend the arrangement for one more year. Last year we had the temporary easements, I'm assuming we'd, I'd have to coordinate with whoever is organizing this. I know it was Ms. Nowaf, I don't know if she's gonna be doing it, so we'll have to find out who the contact person might be, but I'm assuming you, if you're gonna do it for one more year, you'd want the temporary easements in place with the property owners who are going to do it. Then the other thing is, and I don't know, I mean, I understand that the decorations put more strain on these cables than anything else, but those cables are up there and they are used for other things. And if there are safety concerns, I mean, I don't know at some point if you would consider taking them down? Because it's not just the holiday garlands that are going up there.
I agree, I think you, you've got the right idea, if we're gonna quit, they need to be removed, so we don't have any liability whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion or we have a motion on this, sir?
I'll offer a motion to go proceed forward here for a temporary easement for one more year for the holiday garland and then to get a committee formed to work on the issue.
That I'll second. We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both know, motion carries. Under new business, item five point one, New Ulm Fire Department donations.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading to accept the following donations to the New Ulm Fire Department. Eight hundred thirty-six dollars and five cents from Hy-Vee for a grill out, twenty dollars from Christie Mathiowetz from Hy-Vee Grill Out and three hundred five dollars from cable equipment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second off the resolution waived reading, any more discussion? See none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item, I just jumped on my screen, lost it, but anyway, next one, Johnson Park Observation Deck.
So.
Vapor mitigation.
Huh?
Five point three.
Five two.
Johnson Park.
Yep, okay. Yeah, it ain't only me, huh?
Yep, not only you.
So this is.
Go ahead, Chris.
So this is somewhat of a continuing item. Johnson Park's gonna be used in the twenty twenty state amateur tournament and Nuva has requested a first base right field observation deck be added to the Johnson Renew Project to help accommodate an increased number of attendees for the tournament. We had previously approved ISG to prepare construction drawings and the deck has an approximate cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Nuva is looking for the city to fund the project, pledge the money to fund the project. The observation deck was not part of the original RFP and would be an additional cost over the fourteen point eight million dollars allocated for renew. Amenities that will be added to the, as part of the renew project are essentially gonna emulate the observation deck experience. The current capacity for Johnson Park is sixteen forty-eight. New Prague's highest attended game for last year's tournament was opening day at six hundred attendees. And after the state tournament, the city would have to maintain the deck, which be, which would be an increase to Park and Rec's department budget. Using reserve funds to fund this project would decrease reserves by one point four five percent. Nuva is looking to pay back the funds as part of revenue that they'll be getting from the season, the tournament and revenue from fence ads. If Nuva does fail to uphold its obligation, the city will be out the remaining balance. It would be my recommendation not to fund this project as we have other projects in the city that could use this money. You have the Herman, Herman Wall and there are other items where this money can be used, but again, it's up for you guys' discussion and ultimately your decision.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody have any comments? I guess, I'll start it out. I know I've had conversations with the New Ulm Baseball Association and they've had done a lot for our city and they've maintained the park and over many, many years here and we are sticking over a million dollars into that park. And I know a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money, but if we don't do it now, we're never going to do it. And I've had conversations with other cities and businesses from other cities that actually have observation decks and I'll be honest, my grandson races at Arlington Raceway and they got an observation deck right out in the center of the raceway and it's filled every time there's a race. Do they get used? Yes, they do. How much it would get used here? I really don't know. And probably a question to Bob, is the, could someday maybe the park be used for concerts? Anything that the observation deck could be used. I, I could see making some revenue off of it, I don't know if it'd ever pay for itself, but maybe sometimes everything doesn't pay for itself.
I think that's a great idea to have other things other than baseball games, whether it would be concerts. I remember when I was a kid in New Ulm, going to the fireworks at Johnson Park, not suggesting that we're gonna have fireworks there again, but that was a non-baseball event and very popular. The other day, we're, we're hosting the two triple A tournament and they're playing as we speak. If it's not pouring, it looks like there's sun shining, but the other day down that first baseline, that area was pretty full with out of town folks. And I, you know, I, I just think that that observation deck will be a, a great amenity. Franklin Rogers in Mankato has a couple different observation decks and they have corporate events tied to their baseball games there. Why, we could, we certainly could do that here. And, and, and the New Ulm Baseball Association will pursue that. I've also mentioned in the past, we have a lot of championship baseball teams and having reunions, not necessarily during a baseball game, but at, at the historic Johnson Park is also a way in which we could utilize the facility that, that we're, that we're constructing this summer.
I just, I guess where I'm coming from is, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right. I mean, okay, we built our ice skating rink out there, whatever. Can't get the name, my brain went dead, but anyway, we built the arena out there and now we got the new Ulm steel in there and we, we're making adjustments to it, you know? Maybe we could've made those adjustments right from the beginning if we really would've given it more thought and like I say, I'm not saying it's not a lot of money, but I just, if we don't do it now, we're never gonna do it. That's the bottom line, we are not gonna go and tear that park apart, we're not gonna convince anybody to do it again, so. I would say, take some reserves and go for it. And I'm not too worried about you guys not paying it back. I mean, will we get it back this year, next year, five years? I don't know. But you guys been a heck of a support for the community, so.
As soon as possible and as you see the sources of revenue that we have, my goal would, to have it be paid in twenty twenty.
That would be great. Not in writing, right?
I'm gonna.
More comments?
I'm gonna support it also in favor of working with the New Ulm Baseball Association on this. I think they've done a lot for the community and in support and we've got an opportunity here to do a one-time tune-up on an eighty-year-old baseball stadium and it's, you know, everything changes and, you know, as, you know, different amenities and it's gonna make us unique and hopefully they'll capture that opportunity and try to make, capitalize on it.
Any more comments?
Yeah, I have a hard, I have a hard time with it because I look at other projects that we're looking at with pledges, you know, we've got the amphitheater that is, you know, we've got a lot of pledges for that and that's waiting to be built and we've got the the Herman Wall that needs to be addressed and money that needs to go there, possibly some from reserves and what happens when soccer comes and stands before us and wants a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and I am a, a baseball fan and a baseball supporter and I love Johnson Park, but I don't know if this financial arrangement is right for the City of New Ulm.
On the opposite side, the corner, I've, corner, I've never been at the ballpark. From the outside looking in, I never went to a game in my life, but it's something that I believe is the right decision to do. So.
Oh, my, I'm, I'm still tossing and turning, I mean, I'm an advocate person at Johnson Park, I do know that teams even still come to New Ulm and request not to play up at Public High School, request to play at Johnson Park. If, if, if the city attorney could guarantee me that they're liable to pay it back, but they're not, I realize that. I know, I know.
Quite a few years ago, there was an organization called the American Legion that was gonna have a, worked for the state baseball tournament. First time ever that the state Legion baseball tournament was held outside of Minneapolis, because everybody wants to go to Minneapolis. First time in the history of the American Legion baseball, state American Legion baseball tournament, that they made money and that was here in New Ulm. A lot of hardworking people and they were not necessarily new, you know, New Ulm baseball people, but they were Legion ball and used the park and the comments of the players that were here, I was fortunate enough to be involved as far as commander of the legion and the comments that we heard about our park, now we're trying to make it a little bit better. So, go with it from there, just my comment.
If I could add to that, I'm representing, Reverend Kispiger, representing New Ulm's American Legion baseball. To add to that, they're hosting the state amateur tournament next year and that comes, that opportunity probably comes around every twenty years or whatever. American Legion in New Ulm hosts two annual tournaments every year that are prominent, highly regarded in the state and almost every year we're asked to host a postseason tournament also. And all of those, if the deck will enhance the experience of every one of those fans, they might not even use it, but they're gonna see it, they're gonna see people enjoying the ones that are occupying it and stuff, so. We made a commitment to the New Ulm Baseball Association a year ago that we would support and help them conduct their two thousand twenty baseball state amateur tournament and we would support and encourage you to allow them to enter into this proposal.
Thank you.
Mr. President, the only comment I'd make is legally, I think everyone on the council understands that the pledge is not enforceable. Frankly, one of the concerns I have is because this would be paid out of reserves, clearly you, the recommendation is not to tap into the renew project funds. What happens, because this is the first project, what happens at the end when any other organization wants something done and there's not enough money? And they offered to make a pledge. Are we gonna take that out of reserves and how are we gonna tell them no and?
Well, I, I think, we're the city council, we, maybe we ain't gonna make everybody happy all the time, but we, we have to do what we are elected to do, make decisions to the best of our ability and go for it. If we get somebody up here, I'm, I'm talking about the New Ulm Baseball Association has done, we have proof to what they have done. If somebody else comes up and they're just looking for a free handout, we have the right to say no and we should have the backbone to do it. I think, we don't have to give to everybody that wants something. I'm sorry to say it, but I, I think we have to do what's best interest of the city and I personally believe this is a good interest, you know? But that's only me.
You know, and just some comments I've heard within our community, we're a baseball community and, you know, we're sought out as a destination, you know, and it helps fill our lodging and our restaurants and things within our community, like, you know, on the weekends, so. It's another reason to support.
To go along with what Larry just said, we are a baseball city, go down to the Twins Stadium and see that great big plaque where they have listed the hometowns of Twins players. New Ulm has represented, what, four or is it five times? Not too many other cities this size are represented as having Minnesota Twin, wearing Minnesota Twin uniform. So, yeah, baseball is New Ulm. Any more comments?
Okay, I'll, I'll make another one, it's going through my mind, I mean, okay, I didn't, I didn't get any phone calls against, like, do not do it. A few comments that I did hear was, boy, Johnson Historic Park, it would be nice to have an observation deck like the Moon Dogs have, which I have been over on their observation deck. So, let's vote.
Well, I'll offer a motion to pledge a hundred and fifty thousand a city reserve funds to the New Ulm Baseball Association to build an observation deck at Johnson Park.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. The finance, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward the Baseball Association Observation Deck. Any more discussion? Boy, we're gonna hold you to this one, Bob. All, all in favor, say aye.
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 Both know?
No.
Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Five point three, vapor migration.
Mitigation.
Mitigation, there you go. I thought we were gonna have cigarettes here, but. At the city center apartments. Who's got that one? Let's see. John. Takes me time to go back and forth here, cause I don't have my split screen, so. Go ahead, John.
All right, just to provide a little bit of background on this project. As part of the city center apartment project, the city was responsible for the removal and of contaminated soil from a portion of the site as well as the installation of a vapor barrier, excuse me, underneath a part of the parking level floor. Both those activities have been completed, but the city is also responsible for the subfla, subslab vapors from the Oswald Activity Center located in the rear of the property. Those vapors will be removed through the subslab area through a soil vapor extraction system similar to a radon removal system in a, below a basement. This, this would be the final remediation activity for this site and, and the city's responsibility with that. We have been working with Brown InterTech and they have provided consulting services for this project since its start. The vapor mitigation project was not part of their original contract since the future use of the Oswald space was not known at that time and nor was there any indication of a potential vapor. Um, and nor was there any indication of a potential vapor problem in that area. So the consultant, uh, services are necessary to remedy this type of remediation. Um, and Brown InterTech, um, has, um, given us a cost of not to exceed four thousand dollars for their services on this project. We received, uh, two bids, one from Aaron's Heating and Air Conditioning, um, and another, um, from Home Safety Solutions, uh, in the metro, and Aaron's, uh, was the low bid.
Thank you.
I, I do have one question. I mean, you read it out loud, but definitely this is our last remediation activity over there. I know we had other issues with the spill cleanups and whatnot. This would be it?
As, as far as I understand, yes, it would be.
Mr. President, we have had discussions with the MPCA and they are waiting for this particular project to be completed and they will sign off. That's what.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, with that being said, I'll accept the bid of Aaron's Heating and Air Conditioning in the amount of eight thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars for the installation of a vapor mitigation system at the City Center Apartments, one fifteen South Minnesota, and to retain the firm of Brown InterTech to provide project services and work.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Polls no? Motion carries. Item five point four, modifications to the roundabout construction phase, phasing plan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the, uh, two thousand nineteen North Highland Avenue Roundabout Plan, uh, our project has, is now under construction. It was awarded to MR Paving and Excavating, which is the same contractor who has the Fifth North Street Plan, or Fifth North Street Reconstruction Project a few blocks away. The original plan was structured to, uh, keep two constricted, or one constricted lane in each direction open on Highland Avenue. It created a three-phase approach and was rather complicated and, uh, frankly, might be a little bit unsafe. The, the contractor has requested that the city council or the city consider allowing a full roadway closure at North Highland, on North Highland at Oak Street. Uh, they will provide a full detour, which is attached as part of your, your agenda item. Uh, they've also offered to, uh, deduct a ten thousand dollar savings from the contract amount of approximately three hundred thirty-six thousand. So the plan would, uh, also reduce the duration of the construction from approximately two months to one month. I have discussed or had communications with the, uh, uh, ISD eighty-eight Superintendent, and he's on board with this. They are going to do some, uh, work on their parking lot, but they would have a north entrance accessible from Highway fourteen and is, uh, okay with the, the proposal. So that's the basis of the request. The contractor is available if you have any specific, uh, questions regarding the, the request. I do recommend that it be approved.
In my mind, closing up is actually safer. We know from North Highland, from the southern part of Highland off Fifth North and coming up Oak, those people all have access to their homes. And how can you turn down a ten thousand dollar savings?
Thank you. Any more discussion?
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Polls no? Motion carries. Item six point one, reported claims, list of claims paid in the amount of one million seven hundred thirty-seven thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-six cents, and a list of claims to be paid in the amount of three hundred ninety-four thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-six cents.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Polls no? Motion carries. Item number seven is adjournment, so we'll adjourn the meeting and then we'll go into a closed session for eight point one.